Good evening and Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 6, 2016 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from December 2, 2015. And all were at that meeting, right? So is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we second that we accept the minutes of December 2, 2015 as written in the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes unanimously. We don't have record class tonight, right? Okay. So it takes us to our signed permit agenda. And there is one of those applications tonight for sign-10009-2015. Spectrum Monument Sign at 100 Paramount Park Drive in the MXD Zone. This is for a monument sign height approval. Presenting from staff is Chris Berger. Good evening, Chris. How are you?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is an application for a 12-foot-tall monument sign for Spectrum at 100 Paramount Park Drive. The land is zoned MXD. The 72-square-foot sign is proposed for the southwest corner of North Frederick Avenue and Paramount Park Drive, indicated by the red arrow in this slide. This application comes before the Planning Commission because the proposed monument sign is 12 feet in height. Signs exceeding 8 feet in height require Planning Commission approval in accordance with Section 24-212 M2 of the City Code. The proposed stone sign will include the name of the development on the top metal panel and five metal panels for business tenants. Engineering Services Division Chief Ali Mumpower has reviewed the proposed sign and deemed it will not be a hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The sign meets the requirements set forth in the Spectrum at Watkins-Milton Center Comprehensive Sign Package. Are there any questions?
So in this case, this one doesn't need to show an address because there's multiple businesses on it, or?
One of the conditions for approval recommended by staff is that they include either the address of the development's main address or the range of addresses for the tenants.
Okay.
So they do need addresses.
It's a recommendation, but it's required? Because I know on some of the signs, we require, I think, as part of life safety.
Right.
Okay. All right. Can you real quick just do a quick overview of its relative elevation to the street?
Sure.
There's a change in our...
Yeah. At this area, there's a steep...
Topography.
You can see where this white line is. That's the approximate location of where it would be. And it's approximately 10 feet from that location to along the sidewalk here. So it will be on a elevated site.
So the total height, I mean, relative to the street then, is its height plus 10?
I believe that would be accurate measurement. Yeah, approximately 20 to 25 feet.
So has the applicant come up with a reason for doing that?
They originally wanted to place it along the slope, but it would be such a steep slope that they would exceed the 12 feet. So their reasoning for placing it on the flat ground on the elevated site was so they could fit within the 12-foot limit.
Actually, the question is more why going with the additional four feet, going to 12 feet? Given that they've got so much height and they're so close to the street.
Right. They want to do as many tenants as possible.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just like your point of order. Spectrum, is that an icon with the spectrum? And if there are going to be other icons on the tenant signs?
No, we would not consider that an icon.
That's not considered an icon?
Because it's not in the shape of an animal, person, product.
Oh, it needs that identity.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just block.
Okay. But as far as any tenant names go that go up there, in the future, if there is an icon, would that be, then we'd have to come back and each one? Okay.
Any other questions?
This one, well, can there be something on the side? I know you show a side elevation. Can they put something on the side or that really is typically not something on the side of each of the squares?
I don't...
Side wrap.
Yeah, when it wraps around.
I don't think they anticipate doing that. Yeah, I know that's not what they're planning to do. Where it says tenant name, that's where they plan to have signage.
Okay, so nothing on the sides?
Correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
The location was on the CSP. I didn't check.
It was, yeah. And then...
That's great.
Location, it's within five feet of where they plan to put it, or I can't even tell, but approximately two to five feet. It's this black line here that you can't really tell, but...
And that's not the... That is the CSP drawing?
The site plan, you mean, the site plan.
The comprehensive signage plan?
There wasn't a comprehensive signage.
Okay. So on the site plan, that's, this is the approved site plan we're looking at right now?
And they had to shift it out of that, I believe. Wasn't that in the public utilities?
Yeah, that's maybe two, maximum of five feet away from...
Yeah, it's all fuzzy and a little DPI challenge, but it's, the sign's sort of angled incorrectly, right? The actual proposed.
Yeah, is that one shot at an angle as opposed, you're really, it's going to be perpendicular to the road.
Perpendicular to the road, right?
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone here that is, would like to comment on this application? Okay. So Chris, that takes us to recommendations from staff. But I do want to preface that with another question. And I, not to be too blunt, but I don't see the applicant's reason for needing or wanting this. I mean, I understand 12 is allowable if we say okay, but I'm also looking for the case to be made that we should add that kind of height, especially when the sign is perched up so high to begin with.
The reasoning that I mentioned in the report was also that, I believe, the speed limit's 40 miles per hour here along Frederick Avenue. And they want to grab the attention of passing motorists and kind of provide a wayfinding, a wayfinding signage for people entering the development. So it's an attention grabbing. I believe that would be the main entrance into Spectrum.
Okay.
Just to, maybe to clarify that further, you've got the anticipated interchange coming in right around there as well. So there will be a lot more traffic coming through that area, and that would be a wayfinding point.
It would. I think, I think in the past, we've approved additional height based on the relative position of the sign to the site, or the relative position of the buildings to the site. I mean, I think in this case, most of the buildings probably don't have any exposure to the street, or at least it's a very, you know, glancing kind of view for their own signage. Is that fair? I mean, my recollection is when you drive by, unless you're looking at just the right moment, you don't see that storefront that curves back around.
It's an internally focused development.
Yeah.
On purpose, obviously.
And I think it's an important point to understand that that's, that's what they don't have there that others would have, is true street frontage on their actual stores, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Let me just step back real quick now. The lighting will be each of the panels, correct?
Yes.
So basically, like, where the sign, where the name will be, will be, that'll be lit? That'll shown shine through, right?
Each of the panels will be lit, yes.
Probably just the letters, though.
Just the letters. That's what I'm saying, the letters. Just the letters. Yeah, okay.
If it follows our sign ordinance, it would just be the...
Right. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So with the recommendation that there be addresses on there, does that add a band, or does it just get tacked to the stone? Or what's the proposal, do you think?
We would prefer that it be underneath the spectrum at the top here. That looks like the best solution. So on the top panel, they can just add the number, the street number.
As part of their panel?
Right.
Great, okay. So the relative number of slots or whatever would stay the same?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just pile on and say, I would love to see in this, in the report, more than one sentence for justification of the variance. And I think we can probably pull some of that weight up here. I certainly see it as, as a fast, you know, I agree with your, the sentence we have, which is, it's speedy, it's a good distance from North Frederick Avenue. It's going to be, you know, relatively fast coming up and around that bend. It is an internally, from our rationalization, is an internally focused development. So it's going to be difficult for folks to really identify where a certain restaurant is, where a certain tenant might be. And hopefully, the brand of Spectrum will pull them in anyway, and we certainly need a large side to do that. It sits back fairly far from the road. There's that great old rule of thumb, one-to-one. So certainly, this sign is not taller than the distance it is from the road, even when it sits up on a berm, which that kind of rule is passed. And I think just from a signage standpoint, consistency up the pike, we've already proved that sign is built down the road. And this is a good complement to that sign as well. So I think, in my mind, this is a good proposal.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have the justification on the table.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see it.
Tell me what you were talking about. You said a one-to-one. What are you comparing one-to-one?
You know, gravity is what it is, and people tend to be a little uncomfortable if something is taller than it is farther away.
Oh, 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 gotcha.
So if something is 10 feet tall, you want it to be 10 feet away from you.
So the relative slope is the one, I guess.
So this sign is more than one-to-one if you're driving up the road or you're walking up that, not the sidewalk.
Good observation, yeah.
It's an old generic rule of thumb.
Excellent.
Thanks for the lesson.
Any other comments or concerns?
No.
All right. So I guess go ahead with, did you actually get to finish your recommendation? Did we tell you with...
All right.
I guess you didn't. So go ahead, Chris.
Staff recommends the Planning Commission grant approval of sign 10009-2015 Spectrum Monument Sign finding to be in conformance with Section 24-212 of the City Code with one condition, which is the applicant shall include on the sign either the center's main address or a range of addresses in accordance with Section 24-212M8.
All right. Any questions about the recommendation? All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant approval of sign 10009-2015 Spectrum Monument Sign, finding it to be in conformance with Section 24-212 of the City Code with the one condition that was just written to the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Off for our, congratulations and good luck to the applicant. Next up is a public hearing on an amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-7149-2015 with a Devlin property, Watkins-Milton Center at 294 Caulfield Lane and 382 Caulfield Lane in the MXD Zone. And this is to combine Outlot A with Lot 43. And as I said, it was an amendment to schematic development plan. The technicalities behind why we're seeing that, Greg will cover when he presents his presentation.
Good evening. This is a public hearing for amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-7149-2015. The application was submitted by Gary Unterberg of Rogers Consulting for the properties located at 294 and 382 Caulfield Lane within the Watkins-Milton Center subdivision. Current zoning of the property is MXD. The scope of this application is to combine Outlot A, Block N, located with the Devlin property, with Lot 43, Block N, located within the Watkins-Milton Center development. Subsequently, removing Outlot A from the Devlin property and creating a new Lot 44, Block N. The proposed amendment will not increase or decrease the total unit counts for either the Watkins-Milton Center development or the Devlin property. This application comes before the Planning Commission as a public hearing pursuant to Section 24-198(c) of the City Code. Following a courteous review that was presented to the Mayor and City Council on November 16, 2015, the council deemed that the application has a minor effect and directed staff to have the amendment referred to the Planning Commission to make a final decision on the application. As stated earlier, this application is to combine Outlot A, Block N, with Lot 43, Block N. As part of the application, the applicant is proposing to alter the sighting and orientation of the already-approved single-family detached home. The newly-sighted home will utilize new architecture not previously-approved in the Watkins-Milton Center development. The new architecture will be based off previously-approved architecture but will incorporate a side-entry garage. Please note, the final architecture and sighting will be brought before the Planning Commission as part of a final amendment to the final site plan at a later date. The hearing was duly advertised in the December 3 and December 10 issues of the Washington Post, and the property was properly posted. There are currently 17 exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits are referred in the exhibit list. All the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting on the city's webpage or at the Planning and Co. Administration office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibit should be noted prior to the closing of the record, otherwise they will be deemed received into evidence. Since this is an amendment, a minor amendment, staff is recommending that the commission both close the record and take final action on the application during tonight's meeting. As such, a draft resolution for ASDP-7149-2015 has been included and is ready for final action should the commission show choose. Please note, the final resolution has been modified slightly for some minor formatting corrections and clarification of the application number. And with that, staff and the applicant engineer Gary Unterberg are available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Just a kind of a technicality. If this is consolidated, which side does it belong to then? Because are we going to ultimately see the whole thing being annexed as part of Watkins-Milton Center?
The Devlin property, I believe, has been annexed already into Watkins-Milton Center. For SDP purposes, it is being removed from the Devlin property and being added to the Watkins-Milton Center SDP.
Gotcha. All right. And just do me a 45-second explanation on the proposed orientation of the house in this new site plan and why...
Why don't we have the applicant do his presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. You were moving to questions. I didn't realize.
Good evening. Gary Unterberg with Rogers Consulting. With me is Steve Nardella, representing Classic Communities.
Right. How are you?
The, we agree with the conditions, and we really don't have a presentation. We can walk you through the orientation or how, what has changed with combining the two parcels.
Just, yeah, if you wouldn't mind real quick, and why it's oriented the way it should be.
Up on the screen.
Up on the screen. And yeah, well, what was previously with Watkins-Milton was a skinny lot, and it was to be a custom home that faced Caulfield in line with Lot 2, 3, and 4, which has now been built. Also, just an update, as was mentioned, the 19 lots with the Devlin property have been annexed into the Parklands HOA. The site is under construction. You can drive the loop. Caulfield Road is constructed, so you can drive the loop and continue on through. The first stick of townhomes, which are lots 39 through 42, right in this location, are under construction. So that's all moving forward. Like I said, there was a custom home that was on this, it's almost a triangular-shaped lot that was part of the original approval, and it faced Caulfield. What we've been able to do is by combining the two parcels, creating a larger lot, and then also, the house has been turned, so the front of the house faces the inside of the curve. So this is the front of the house. This would be a Beacons Field, which is, well, as we come back for site plan approval, we'll show you, this is already, the Beacons Field is one of the units that has been built in the rest of the Parklands in Section 8. So we've, it's actually, in my opinion, it's fair sighting. It's a larger house. We rotate around, and it really provides an end cap to the end of the block with the single families on the one side and the townhomes on the other side.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? No. More presentations? No? All right. Is there anyone? As Greg mentioned, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone that would like to comment on this application? Please, just step up to the podium and state your name and address for the...
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dennis Rock. I live at 386 Caulfield. And what I was concerned about, and I, hopefully, I don't have any problems with extending the lot, but I wanted to make sure that the construction was going to be a single-family home, and that we're going to have townhomes pushed into that, because there's going to be quite a few homes back there.
So are you satisfied with the presentation?
I'm satisfied with that. You know, matter of fact, it's going to really look pretty nice if they put the house there. So I have to say, it's a good job.
Great. All right. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? All right. Well, seeing nobody, Greg, what's the, what's the wrap-up?
Staff recommends the Planning Commission close the record for application ASDP-7149-2015 and proceed with final action. And staff recommends the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-7149-2015 and adopt resolution with four conditions.
You want that in two motions or one motion?
I believe two.
Two separate motions?
We're going to close the record.
Close the record, and then we go, okay.
The only comment I'd make, and I don't know if it's appropriate since this is really an SDP, but when we went through the design guidelines for the rest of Watkins, we had some key lots identified. We did a lot of study and put some care into what was exposed. Now, this is an example of a house where you see a lot of the back of it, potentially, the way it's sighted, the way it's oriented. And we haven't made a formal designation, this is a key lot or a three-sided lot, or whatever terms are used. You're all looking at me like I'm...
No, no, no.
So at what point do we, you know, make, at least formally say, this needs to be a four-sided thing that reads from all...
The applicant actually has already submitted their AFP amendment, and we're currently reviewing it. Staff currently reviewing it. It is being proposed currently as a key lot with four-sided architecture, brick.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I'll just add, was a four-sided brick key lot before with the custom home, and we've carried that forward.
Okay. So if it's not formally adopted, at least we have on the record that that's the way it's being treated? That's fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question just regarding some of the conditions? And why specifically are the noise disclosure conditions so prominent? I mean, isn't that automatic? Isn't that with any property that's being sold now in that development? Or is this a new additional?
Which condition?
Well, the condition, the first condition, the second condition?
That's a similar condition that was added also to the Devlin property. Because of the house's location's so close to the train tracks...
Right.
We have requested before that we be notified, or that the property was properly notified of that condition.
Right, to purchase.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is, I mean, again, why is this a specific condition just for this property? I mean, shouldn't that be for any property? Any purchaser in the Devlin?
It's only within the Devlin property, since this is a new SDP and a new site plan, the condition would carry over between the two.
It's actually moving over onto the other side.
Yeah. It would be part of the conditions that would be part of this SDP for Watkins-Milton Center. I don't believe that was a condition at the time.
No, it wasn't. That's why, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
We're fine with it.
Good. Yeah.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
The sighting's good. It does end the block. It does blend the sticks to the town, to the pre-standing. It's well done.
All right. Any other discussion? If there isn't any of the discussion, the first step would be to close the record on this. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the record for application ASDP-7149-2015 and proceed with final action.
Second.
Second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Aye. And then next up is the staff's recommendation to approve the, or I guess, approval resolution, motion for approval resolution. Is that right?
Adoption.
It's a pretty long motion with the adoption of the resolution.
Okay.
So if we could follow the recommended motion, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, so the recommended, the recommendation from the staff is to approve the application and approve the, or adopt the resolution. Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record, the findings of the final staff analysis, approve the amendment to schematic development ASDP-7149-2015 and adopt resolution per ASDP-7149-2015 with the four conditions as written through the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us then to discussion item, which we have the master plan process with Marty at sea, right?
Rob Robinson.
Oh, Rob, there you are.
I'm happy to turn it over. It'd be a short schedule.
Good evening, Commissioners. A few weeks ago, I came before you to begin discussions about the 2016 update as it was reflected in, you know, changes to the state law and the land use article, and how to rethink certain things and things that have to be incorporated. We left that discussion with guidance provided to staff that my long six-page, which I thought was short, six-page memo should be reduced somewhat into more of an executive summary before, and that the Planning Commission wanted to get one last look before I transmit this on to the Mayor and Council, which is sort of, you know, one of the things, you know, sort of the responsibility of the Planning Commission. So included in your packet is the draft CPC, and also, for reference purposes, was the original memo provided for the discussion. You will note, some of the things did not make it into the CPC because it was more from staff to Planning Commission, so it was discussions, things along, you know, recommendations for support for certain items in the strategic plan. That's really not what we were looking for in the CPC formally. That's going to be another vehicle for the Planning Commission to transmit, you know, their desires. So obviously, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. At the conclusion of the memo that you have submitted to us, there's no indication of the Watkins-Milton Exchange. Is that, does that come into play here as far as master plan and the...
In a sense, no, because while, you know, obviously, they're still going through stuff, it has been fully funded for construction.
Right.
So we know it's happening. The last paragraph was basically related to those projects that in many ways, we really don't know. As we mentioned, you know, the CCT is fully funded through engineering, but there is no money for construction. The BRT, the state's original allocation of funds in the CTP, only carried it through alternatives retained for detailed study. You know, it didn't, you know, there is nothing beyond that. So, you know, from staff's perspective, we would like, you know, obviously, get the other two master plans that I mentioned, Parks, Rec, and Culture, and Historic Preservation out of the way, but also to give us another year to get a better lay of the land with the current administration and everything else, how these transportation. Because as we mentioned, you know, it's going to be very difficult to do a land use article, a land use element, and ignore transportation at the same time. And these are two dynamic game chains. Whereas the Watkins-Milton Center, essentially, all the properties around the four corners have entitlements to some sort, be it Humane Society Sketch Plan all the way down to Watkins-Milton Center, which is just waiting for commencement of construction. Whereas other things, you know, are really going to hinge, you know, the redevelopment of Kentlands can be very much, you know, Kentland Shopping Center can be very much tied to the CCT.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Now, these will break over the fiscal year or the calendar year in terms of like start and stops or calendar?
This one candidly, you know, while in the strategic plan, you know, we'll say, you know, adopt if we know it's going to be done, but we really don't work, we work on calendar cycles with the master plan, and essentially, you know, hey, it's 2016, let's begin to look at the update. I think experience has shown all of us, you know, an element takes basically a year, a little over a year, to complete, so it may overlap fiscal years, so that's why we won't, really are trying to get away from in the strategic plan, saying, you know, begin drafting and complete, you know, because we don't necessarily know that it's going to happen, but if we know we're going to have something done in that fiscal year, we'll list that as, you know, adopt.
Okay, so the way it'll track is we'll get it underway, get these first two chunks underway.
The two, the goal is, you know, and as I mentioned, you know, the preliminary meetings have begun, I fully expect, in discussion separately with both bodies handling Historic Preservation in Parks and Rec, that I would very much like them potentially completed by March 2017, you know, fully adopted at that point, you know, and that's walking them through the process, because that way I'll have it in there, we'll have their recommendations there to begin, you know, earmarking and then begin work in earnest on both land use and simultaneously transportation.
Okay, so we can have a little bit of overlap at the beginning of 17 if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, hey, it's January 1st, I have to begin this element, yes, we want to make sure we're beginning working, I want to make sure, you know, we have, you know, it may even be after the fiscal year, at the beginning of FY18, that we really begin work, because that's when we'll have a better sense of how some of the state programs are coming, what's going to happen, so.
Okay. Well, good, yeah, I think it's, at least the opening worked out a little better, I think, this time, which is good.
Okay.
Kind of gets to the point, so they, they don't make it to page five or six, you know, the point's still there.
That's fine. Well, now it's only three pages, well, two and a half.
Two and a half.
It's good, I try, but.
Great, great.
Great.
Any other questions?
So, I mean, if the commission's good, I mean, my object will be, you know, I'll transmit this.
Yes.
I don't view us having to do a presentation to council, I will do it, you know, from correspondence from planning commission back there, and then if they wish, if they wish to discuss something, then obviously we would circle back and coordinate that.
There'd be plenty of presentations when the work gets underway on the elements, I guess.
Well, the clarity here is great, so it's, you know, I don't know that it needs a, it's great.
Okay.
Imagine that clarity.
Well, yeah, that one was clean, just a little bit more detail.
Wiki good.
I do want to mention, I mentioned to the chair prior to this meeting, another follow-up, one of the discussions that the commission had had was engaging the various bodies that are developing master plans earlier in the process for a work session. I mentioned to the chair, I will be meeting with the Parks and Rec crew tomorrow, and it is on their radar, and once we have a better sense of where they sit, we would like to potentially tentatively schedule this work session during one of the planning commission's regular meetings, but it would be with Parks, Rec, and Culture staff and their various committee chairs to do this, so we were hoping, it may be March when this occurs, and obviously, I'll be circling back with Mr. Berger to find out where he sits so we can set up a similar thing with the HDC.
Right. Do those have to be, do they have to be in here like televised? Could we do...
It would still be open meeting, as long as everyone's, so it almost, it's almost easier in some ways, especially since they're sort of used to night meetings also, so if we can, you know, depending upon the weight of the agenda that night, it might be easier just to conduct it.
Just do it here, okay.
Just do it here, it can be televised, everybody can see, so then if they want to, you know, somebody wants to chime in with comments, you know, we can start having that.
All right.
You were thinking the pub.
No, I was just thinking more around, more around the table upstairs in the gallery, just to have room to have everybody spread out and kind of be there, but...
Well, we can discuss further options, I mean, if it's one of these things where the agenda's heavy, but then it'll be organizing on a non-planning commission night, so it's just making sure we don't conflict with any other committees or something like that, but based upon their committees and everything else, obviously, in nighttime, maybe it would work best.
Excellent. Any further questions or concerns?
No.
So send it along, let's...
Great, thank you.
Roll on, thanks a lot, Rob.
Nice job.
Thank you.
So good work.
All right, is that, that's the only discussion I have on master plan?
Yep.
You did know them right then. All right, next up, we have election of officers as we do every January. Is there a nomination for chair, please?
Yes, I'd like to nominate John Bauer as continuing the chair of the planning commission for the following year.
Thank you, I'll accept, any other nominations?
Second.
Okay, third?
Any other nominations?
No.
And I think that Robert Julbord is a motion to close nominations or something to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Second.
So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, I guess...
Vice chair.
That's all we need, okay.
Vice chair.
So then, nomination for vice chair, please.
I believe Mr. Winborn is in line to be the next vice chairman of the 2017, 2016 planning commission.
I happily accept.
Trying to move it ahead a year.
All right, any other nominations?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Fifteen.
Thank you, congratulations.
It usually takes us till March to get that worked out.
Yeah, we're all here.
That's why.
We've had problems with, yeah, we've had problems with everybody meeting here. Okay, next up is...
So it is clear by that motion that both the president nomination and vice president were chair and vice chair were accepted?
Yes.
Okay, because...
Accepted.
Because we were actually going with, it sounded like it might be vice chair, so just so the record's clear, that's, we're good.
We don't want this to go sideways and close.
No, no, no. You'd be surprised sometimes how it can.
Close doors, you'll have to work it out.
So we're good, we're good.
Thank you, okay, great. Next up is from the commission, let me think here, what have we got? Okay, so Danny, can I start with you, please?
Sure, I'm just, Happy New Year to everyone, I'm looking forward to working with everyone this year, and we have some exciting things coming up, that's it.
And congratulations, by the way, on all the congratulations in your family.
That's right, and your family.
Thank you, yes, it's been a very exciting December.
Excellent.
I just want to congratulate the chair and the new vice chair for 2016, look forward to a productive season, and Happy New Year to everyone, happy holidays, and be safe out there.
All right, Matt?
Just a quick note, I know the intersection at Saybrook Oaks and Mid County Highway has always been a contentious county and state piece of highway, a lot of accidents, and it's been ongoing construction now for eight or nine months, and it's made a lot of progress. I think it is tremendously different intersection now, it's much, much safer from a pedestrian standpoint, it still has some automotive pieces, and I know that Ollie's working very hard, Ollie and staff are working very hard to sort of clean up the last few pieces of construction that are happening at that intersection. I think from a planning standpoint, it's, it's a success, even though it took a decade to sort of get done, it's a success of, you know...
They had them on a construction the whole time.
No, it wasn't a construction, but it was, there was nothing done for a long, long time, but with the city's help, I think we've pushed, kind of stayed into it, and I think it's, it's another success story where the city's pedestrian priorities from a neighborhood, a new urbanist neighborhood, a sidewalk-based new urbanist neighborhood was able to actually connect with its neighbors for once, and, you know, since the 30 years it was built. So it's a success story, just not quite there yet, but it's close.
Okay. Just in time, all right. Chair, anything tonight?
Just Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you Commissioner Hopkins, we're serving as vice chair last year.
Oh, sure, it was tough.
Yeah, it was tough. And we are fortunate that Chairman Bauer has agreed to serve again, and Danny, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thanks, Jerry. Thank you all for your continued confidence, I'm happy to serve another term, it's growing and as challenging as this can be. And Danny, thank you for serving us last year, so I'm glad.
Sure, thank you.
Look forward to a good year. Do we have anything else from staff?
I've got a couple of things, Chairman. First, we wanted to let you know that we are, we formed a committee, a staff committee, to work on planning awards, and so we'll be bringing some information back at the next meeting as far as scheduling and how we're going to do that, we're taking kind of a fresh look at it, and put some people on there that haven't dealt with it before, and some that have, and we're going to kind of take a new look at what we might want to do, so we'll bring up some ideas back to you. And then, second, I just wanted to announce that we currently have an open alternate position on the planning commission that's advertised. We will have an advertisement going forward at the January 19th mayor and city council meeting for a regular position on the planning commission for a term that's expiring, and so we would encourage anyone that's out there, or anyone that you folks may know, to apply for those positions. There will be a new combined advertisement that will go out on the 19th, and that will be open only until February 3rd, so it's kind of a short window for that revised advertisement that includes both positions. And then, we're anticipating interviews second week in February with someone coming on board in March, so that's kind of the timeline, but again, we, any city residents, and I think that's about the only qualification, but your letters of interest submitted to the city manager's office.
High bar here, huh?
Yeah. We don't want to exclude anyone.
All right, thanks, Marty.
That's all I got.
Trudy, you had a memo?
Yes, in your package, there was a memo concerning two very minor amendment to final plans that we would appreciate if the planning commission would, in accordance with Section 24-172A, B, 3, J, delegate staff to take care of. The first one is an elevator at 9318 Gaither Road, which has a footprint of less than 90 square feet. It's a two-story elevator, as most elevators are, and this is for the Chinese Culture and Community Center building, for them to do an expansion. And then, the next one is a minor addition on the opposite side of the Benjamin Gaither Senior Center, recently renamed that. So it's, we did a similar one on the front, on the senior center, and this is an addition, and also, they're re-striping their parking to eight-and-a-half-foot parking spaces, they're proposing to do that. And if we could take care of that as a staff matter, it would save them a lot of time.
Any concerns?
No.
None.
Good.
Go forward.
Need a motion or just a nod?
A nod is good.
Okay, you got some nods.
I think the record shows a consensus.
Consensus, no.
The nods have it.
As far as meetings, we have one on Wednesday, January the 20th, and we don't have any public hearings or joint public hearings scheduled at this time.
Okay. But we do have the awards to talk about, and is there any follow-up to the master plan that night, or is that...
Oh, on the 20th? We have, we have, I think, we have two site plans that night, and while we have...
You said no public hearings.
No, no joint public hearings on a Monday.
Oh, you say in between now and then, I got it, okay.
No, we have, we have...
We have business.